If I could. If I could get your attention, please? If I could get your attention? Hello? Hi. Is this thing working at all? Is it working?
Yeah, you got it on.
If I could get your attention, please? Hello? Yeah. I need to call the order, the Washington County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment for Meeting of January twenty-three, two thousand and twenty. Would ask for a roll call, please.
Randy Laney.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Walter Jennings.
Here.
Joel Kelsey.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Neil Helm.
And the approval of the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as entered.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion at all? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none. We have a agenda. Any staff, any last minute changes?
No, sir. Agenda's as presented.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none. We have the approval of the agenda and we will begin our session. There's many of you here tonight that don't usually come and we're aware of, everybody wants to have their views considered. So, the way we try to do that, obviously with a crowd like this, is when we get to your particular project, and I'll tell you which project we're on, and you want to make a public comment, we'll ask you to come to the chair because we have a microphone there. Our cases are recorded so they can be reviewed later by others and we can have a conversation and understand your concerns. And when you state, for example, you think a project's going to be noisy, you give three minutes or so is what we try to limit it to. That's what our rules say. And if you can kind of keep within that timeframe, but if ten people before you have said it's noisy, we'd ask that you not repeat that. So, if somebody else has a different concern that they want to express, they'll have a chance to get the microphone. So, we usually don't have a problem with it. Everybody's usually considerate, but keep in mind, it's three minutes. And then if you're representing a group, say you formed some sort of an interest group, then that spokesperson, which will speak for thirty people, they can have ten minutes is kind of how we try to allocate the time. So, again, I'll let you know as we go through it, but many of you haven't been here before. So, we will have a plan or present the project. We'll ask our questions. We'll have a dialect and then we'll open it up for public comment and I'll tell you when that is. Then, once we close that public comment, then we'll deliberate and do whatever it is that we do. So, that's kind of how we function. So, with that, the first item on our agenda is Serenity Shores Minority Subdivision. Yeah.
Serenity Shores Minor Subdivision. This is located in the northeast portion of the county as indicated by the star on the map. And it is completely out of any city or planning area jurisdiction and is solely in the county. Here is the immediate area that the project is in. And here's a close-up of the way the proposal is currently situated. Please note that all areas on the map in the light blue is considered flood zone. Any further development, the applicant or the future owners of the property may wish to construct, must adhere to the current floodplain development code and permitting. And here is the proposed minor subdivision. This is an attempt at a close-up. There are five tracts noted on the plats. Tract one contains the Saddleback Brewery and is not a part of the minor subdivision request. It will be a part of a future lot line adjustment with the proposed tract two of the Serenity Shores Minor Subdivision. Please know that this minor subdivision request is for lots two through five. So, we visited the site on January fourteenth. On the proposed tract five, there are some existing structures. Here is the road that goes through the minor subdivision and this is looking at track five. And this is looking the other way. And there's Saddleback in the middle to the right. The minor subdivision will share the same access as the brewery. And this is the entrance to both, looking towards the minor subdivision. This is directly across the entrance. And here's looking south or left. And here's looking north or to the right on Haberton. On January ninth, a total of thirteen notifications were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the proposed minor subdivision. We have not received any comments opposing or in favor of the project. At this time, staff recommends approval of the Serenity Shores Minor Subdivision request with the following conditions. And these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Any questions to staff at this point? All right. Just to make sure, we're on the Serenity Shores Minor Subdivision. Is there anyone here who wanted to speak to that? Yes, sir. Just come forward and state your name, please. Kind of your interests. If you're a neighbor, kind of show us, tell us where you're at relative to it.
Yes, sir. My name is Steve Rayback and I'm the owner on Serenity Shores. I just had one clarification. There was a comment about sharing the road for access. There is actually a road identified as its own access going in to the east side there. So, it doesn't actually share the access with Saddleback. I don't know that that's of material, but there is its own access road going in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for him at all? Okay. Thank you very much for that. Anyone else here who wanted to address it? Okay. Without further question, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Serenity Shores Minor Subdivision with staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none. All right. We'll move to Silva Little Elm Preliminary Subdivision.
This project is located on the western side of the county and is within the City of Farmington's planning area. Here's the area that surrounds the project parcel. And here's a close-up. The parcel is located on the southwestern side of the intersection of Little Elm and Bethel Blacktop. The applicant is requesting to split a parcel that's approximately thirty-seven, thirty-eight acres into a twelve-point-three-six acre subdivision containing seven lots to be known as the Silva Little Elm subdivision. All of the proposed lots range from one-point-one-five acres to one-point-nine-one acres. Proposed lot six will be considered unbuildable and will be utilized for retention for the proposed subdivision. Section eleven dash fifty-five, paragraph B states that the subdivisions located in the extraterritorial growth areas of incorporated cities shall be developed with that city's standards. Here is an excerpt from the City of Farmington's Planning Commission meeting stating that the Silva Little Elm subdivision was presented and unanimously approved by the commission members. A soil analysis was conducted by a designated representative from the State of Arkansas Health Department. Two test pits were sampled for each lot and each lot was found to be suitable for septic. As lots are sold, the new landowners must apply for applicable septic permits and design with the state health department. On January ninth, a total of twenty-eight notifications were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the project's parcels exterior boundaries. And to date, two comments have been received, both in opposition of the approval. Both neighbors noted concern of utilizing Jack McClure Road. The applicant is not utilizing Jack McClure Road as access. All lots will access from either Bethel Blacktop or Little Elm. So, there are a few subdivision developments within the area. The dark purple circle represents a half-mile buffer and the pink is one mile. The areas, the area shaded on the right side of the screen is the City of Farmington. There are seven subdivisions within half a mile of the proposed Silva Little Elm subdivision. Staff feels that additional seven one-plus acre lots will not cause harm to the neighborhood, nor will the additional vehicle traffic impede the current flow of traffic along Bethel Blacktop and Little Elm. Proposed sized lots are compatible with the existing lots within the other subdivisions. And at this time, staff would like to recommend approval of the little, or excuse me, of the Silva Little Elm preliminary subdivision with the following conditions. And these conditions have changed since the time of your staff report. There is a packet of updated conditions before you and the new conditions are in red. And I'll just scroll to it really quickly here. Basically, we added, we just wanted to make sure that the applicant and the future residents understood that the driveways must be constructed in a manner where the vehicle is not backing out into the county road and that any future structures will not impede this. Staff also wanted to add that due to the location of lot five being at the corner of the intersection, the driveway for the proposed lot must be placed as far away as possible from the intersection of Bethel Blacktop and Little Elm. Any questions?
Just for my memory.
Uh-huh.
Steve, this isn't the same place as where the gym was going in?
No.
This is further.
Yes.
Okay, west, okay.
My question was around, do we have a drawing of the driveways and stuff? I was confused about that.
We don't.
So, how are they going to be done again?
They can be done in any manner. They can use a circular or horseshoe or a turnaround, a stubout. It's up to the property owners. They just can't back out into.
Okay, so they're all going to front, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right. Any other questions up here for now? All right. Anyone here from the public who wanted to speak to this? We're talking now about the Silva Little Elm. Okay. Public comment would close and I'd look up here to see what your pleasure is.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Silva Little Elm Preliminary Subdivision. Subject staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none. Heritage Fellowship Church, the final large-scale development.
Thank you. The Heritage Fellowship Church is requesting final large-scale development approval for the church they just finished constructing in the northeast portion of the county. Is located just off Highway four-twelve, just east of Beaver Lake, at the corner of Arkansas State Highway four-twelve east and Blue Springs Village Road. Sitting on approximately twelve-point-one acres, the church takes access from Blue Springs Village Road. Springdale Water Utility and Washington County Fire Marshal have approved, or have provided their approvals, excuse me. And our county contracted engineer provided comments and questions throughout the various stages of development, all of which have been answered and adequately addressed at this time. The Eupkun has provided the statement certifying the driveway is compacted to support seventy-five-thousand pounds in all weather conditions and a septic permit has been submitted. This photo shows the edge of the paved apron required for the connection to the public road. You notice the drainage inlets on each side of the road with a bright orange construction netting around them. These were left over from the subdivision that was never completed over twelve years ago. There are several of them around the failed subdivision development and the county road department has agreed to repair these drainage inlets. Some of them will be removed altogether. His planning staff recommends approval of the Heritage Fellowship Baptist Church final large-scale development request with conditions and the conditions remain unchanged since the time of your staff report.
Any questions for staff? All right. Anyone here from the public who wanted to speak to Heritage Fellowship Church application? All right. Then, public comment would close and look at, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Heritage Fellowship Church final.
Large-scale development. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's been none. King's Ransom RV Park.
Thank you. Also in the northeast corner of the county, King's Ransom RV Park is requesting CUP approval for a one-hundred-eleven space RV park just off Nob Hill Loop, Washington County Road three-eighty-nine. The CUP proposal is to develop approximately twenty-one acres on a one-hundred-and-twenty-seven acre farm. The RV park proposes a clubhouse with a swimming pool, laundry facilities, a small store, asphalt paved roads, a check-in building with parking, a second entry exit for emergency access, a private water line and several septic systems. However, since the applicant is only requesting CUP approval at this time, the design is only conceptual and the details will be worked out with the large-scale development review. Here you can see the property a little closer. There are several draws that are narrow and deep. The existing stormwater runs off directly to Beaver Lake. You remember last month, the CUP request was tabled so the applicant could address some of the opposition regarding the location of the septic fields and the lack of detention. And so, here's the new site plan showing the septic fields in a new location pulled way back from the water's edge and a proposed detention pond. The fire marshal also required a second entry point for emergency access. This second access point is currently shown on the west side of the property, climbing the hill from the very end of Blue Springs Village subdivision. This second page of the site plan shows the existing twelve-inch water main that runs across the property. I'll indicate it here with my mouse. This is an existing water line, but it has never been tested and accepted by Springdale Water Utility, so it's not in use currently. But the applicant plans on doing the work to have it put into service, which they hope will mitigate Springdale Water's concerns about water supply versus demand on the nearest water tower during the summer months when capacity gets low. The county's future land use plan shows the subject property on the border between low-density residential at one to four residential units per acre and an area with no future land use type designation. Staff feels that with conditions, the intent of the future land use map can be maintained. Site distance to the north is adequate as well as to the south. Current use of the property is agricultural. The existing twelve-inch water main runs right up this field. The Eupkun has begun clearing the area where the RV spaces are proposed to be located. Downstream, the stormwater will have to go through one drainage culvert. The drainage outlet is exposed although the area is covered with debris. Project engineer will include a stormwater drainage report with the subsequent preliminary large-scale development submittal. On the other side of the road, the drainage inlet is completely covered up with vegetative debris. The yellow arrow is pointing straight into the drainage pipe. It is a condition of approval that all the vegetative debris be cleaned up in this area so the stormwater is not blocked from entering the culvert. A channel clear of debris from the detention pond down to the culvert inlet must be maintained. It will likely have to be maintained on a yearly basis. A total of thirty-nine neighbor notification letters were mailed out in accordance with the county ordinance. Five comment forms have been returned, four opposed and one didn't indicate support or opposition, they just had questions. Addressing compatibility in the future land use plan for this area, it is a condition of approval that the applicant includes some type of screening and/or buffering measures at the location shown here in yellow to help mitigate the impact to the closest neighbors. These measures will be evaluated and approved at the preliminary large-scale development phase of review and then inspected at final. Beaver Water District has written a two, has written a second letter in, excuse me, has written a second letter in opposition to this proposal. However, the letter states, "To the extent that the county planning office and planning board support the requested CUP, Beaver Water District suggests considering the following." And I'm paraphrasing when I read. It says, "The proper drainage study should be completed prior to any approvals." Number two, cap the number of RV spaces to one-hundred-and-thirty-five for the entire area of one-hundred-and-thirty-five acres, which would maintain the current zoning density of one unit per acre. Number three, appropriate mitigation measures to ensure adequate riparian zones are developed and maintained and a permanent conservation easement or preserve should be established to create a buffer between the RV park and the lake. And staff recommends approval of the King's Ransom RV Park conditional use permit with conditions. And there are a couple of conditions added since the time of the staff report and I'll go over those quickly.
Just a matter of correction error. See, your first line, it got carried over Heritage Fellowship for some reason.
Where's that?
Stay where you were, right there. See, your very top line? It carried over, yeah, just technically.
Yes, noted, got you.
All right.
Yes. The added conditions are, "Any future expansion of the RV park will require a CUP and large-scale development review and approval." Number two, "Any future expansion of the RV park will be capped at one RV unit per acre of the total acreage of the parent parcels the development resides on." Number three, "Riparian zones adjacent to the lake and adjacent to the stormwater drainage areas must be developed and maintained, creating a buffer between the RV park and the lake." Number four, "A permanent conservation easement should be discussed with the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust and/or the Beaver Water District. Conservation easement is not a requirement, but planning staff wants the discussion to occur. The conservation easement will be at the developer's discretion." Provides, number five, "Provide screening from the neighboring properties according to the screening diagram. Planning staff will review and approve the screening plan." And number six, "Show screening on the preliminary large-scale development site plan." And I'll remind you that any of these added conditions or any of the conditions at all can be amended or removed by you at this point. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Staff, for those of you who are here tonight, we went through this a month ago, so if it seems like, anyway, we discussed it a lot. Questions of you all?
Yeah. Nathan?
Sir.
This states down here, there's one-hundred-and-twenty-seven acres and they're wanting to stop that one-hundred-and-thirty-five on an acre. What was his original acreage per?
I don't have the number right in front of me, sir, and it may be that that number didn't get changed in my presentation because through the review, there was one parcel added. That way, he could gain access down to that Blue Springs Village subdivision entry point. And so, it's one-hundred-and-thirty-five now and you're saying that it says one-hundred-and-twenty-seven?
Well, this one here says one-twenty-seven-point-one-five and you're asking for one-hundred-and-thirty-five spots limited to an acre? So, I mean, there's not enough acreage there for that. That's why I was asking, what was his original per acre, per RV spot?
Yes, sir. The one-hundred-and-thirty-five acre number came from Beaver Water District letter that I received this morning and didn't go through and vet the numbers as closely as I went through and vetted the recommended conditions.
Okay. Then, my next question is, how many spots is he asking for?
One-hundred-and-eleven currently. And that's what's on the table and then they'll come back with large-scale development next if this is approved with one-hundred-and-eleven spaces. But Beaver Water District was asking that if in the future that he asks to go ahead and include more spaces, that they do it, that we cap it at one unit per acre of the entire development. Keeping in mind, they're only developing in the neighborhood of twenty-something acres out of the one-hundred-and-thirty-five.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that wanted to speak to this? I think I see it. Yeah, there he is.
Hey, Nathan, while he's walking up here, these additional conditions are suggestions, right? Not requirements?
They're requirements, but the ones that are suggestions are written as such.
Okay.
Lester Harp. Our project covers three sides of my place. We did not get a notice of a hearing till after the hearing was done. My question was on the buffer. I mean, Mr. White had talked about a buffer between, I've got livestock and I don't want anybody on my property or feeding my animals. I know you can put signs up, just like you out of Stone Park. They say, "Don't pet the animals or don't get out of your car," but people get out. And, uh... So, anyway, that's my concern. I'm not thrilled about having a, but if it's a high-end RV park, then it stays a high-end RV park, then that would be nothing I can do about that. But I would be opposed to just a regular RV park. But I think it, that will just downgrade my value of my property. But what kind of buffer fence were you, and you only had it on, uh... On the west side? And coming up the east side of my property? What about the south side?
Yes, sir. I chose the locations of the buffer due to the contour of the land and I didn't feel that it would be appropriate to build a privacy fence or even to plant a series of shrubs down in the bottom of the draw down there where the water's going to drain through.
Yeah.
Additionally, I did want to include that buffer in the areas where I felt that it would most affect your residents as well as your residents to the, neighbors to the north of you. And that diagram is what I came up with.
Okay.
However, this is only conditional use permit phase where they're just asking for the permission. And then, if they get the permission, if they get this permit approved, the next stage will be the large-scale development stage preliminary where they'll actually have, they'll really flesh out the design. And there'll be another hearing just like this and you'll get neighbor notification and I apologize you didn't receive your letter. But at preliminary large-scale development, you'd be able to review the plans and make comment and we can definitely have a dialogue about that.
Okay. I also own the south side on a, where you're going to put the office and...
Yes, sir.
And my fence line runs, well, the line fence runs down between that, so...
Indeed. I didn't include the yellow line over by the office because I didn't think that you could see it from your house.
Well...
But I'm being corrected now and so we'll definitely take a second look whenever preliminary large-scale development comes through.
It's not a concern about seeing it from my house, it's a concern of somebody feeding my cattle or trying to pet them or something and I don't want to be liable for, uh, well, my, let me give you an instance. I've got a, my dentist has got a subdivision that's went around him and he's got real good fences around his and he says the neighbor kids could climb over the fence and pet the animals or they go down to his pond. And it doesn't matter that he's got signs, it's still that they do it. So, I'm just trying to prevent problems.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here who wanted to address this project? Look to, yeah. You together or both coming up? All right.
Hello, my name is Michael Gregg, and I live at two zero nine eight seven North Lake Shore Drive. I currently own four parcels that adjoin this development. I'm here to address the paved fire department access road that adjoins North Lake Shore Drive. As can be seen by reviewing the maps provided with the CUP, the proposed paved fire department access road is aimed directly at my front door. I am extremely, I am extremely concerned about the surface water coming off the paved road, especially during major downpours. Recently, I've experienced runoff in my yard from the existing dirt road that leads up to the hill after the road was cleared and placed back into use. There is already an issue with surface water at this location that has cost me a substantial amount of money. In two thousand and five, my grandparents sold me their vacation home. My grandfather built this home with his own hands for my grandmother. Every morning, he would kiss my grandmother and tell her he was headed to work on their love nest. This is what my family came to call what is now my home. It is one of the last things that I still have to remember my family by. When the home was built, there was a trailer house directly across the street. Around two thousand and seven, this trailer house was removed and a new house was built. Watershed was not even considered when the house and driveway was built. Now, the water comes down the driveway and flows directly across the cul-de-sac into my driveway and down to my front door. This drastically increased the amount of surface water that flows into my drive. With the increased influx of water, my foundation was damaged, my basement constantly flooded, and it caused other damage to my property as well. One quarter of my foundation was exposed for over four feet from the corner in both directions, leaving my foundation cantilevered out of the ground. This now requires that my foundation be shored up by installing jacks under it. Each jack costs five thousand dollars, and my home requires five jacks for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. To save my family home from the water, I had to install a series of retaining walls with drainage costing in excess of ten thousand dollars. In addition, I had to have a trench drain installed that borders the county road. This drain is one foot wide, two feet deep, and a hundred foot long. You won't find another like this within a hundred mile radius. This cost me another ten thousand dollars. To assist, I also paid, to assist with the problem, I also paid twelve hundred dollars to install new guttering systems on my house, along with new metal roof to help push the water away from my foundation. I have done everything that I can possibly do to protect my home from water damage. All these expenses came out of my own pocket. With all that said, this enormous trench drain does not contain all the water. Water still flows out of the drain on the west edge. Fortunately, water flows into the side drive that runs along the west of my home. This trench drain constantly fills with dirt, rock, and debris that has to be dug out yearly. Each year, I've had to hand shovel approximately one hundred cubic feet of dirt and rock and debris out of this drain. That is what settles out of the drain and does not flow out of the drains down into the river. This is more than enough material to fill a bed of a full-size pickup truck. I remind you that this has to be done yearly. All of this water comes from a single driveway that is approximately only thirty feet in length. The water leaves this driveway and flows across the county road and then flows onto my property. This water has already eroded the cul-de-sac to the point that there is only a strip of pavement approximately three feet wide on each side of the road. The rest is dirt and rock. In addition, the county road department has not paved, repaired, or maintained the cul-de-sac since two thousand and seven, except for an occasional sprinkling of gravel when it ices. All of that gravel gets washed directly into my drain as soon as the snow and ice melts and turns into surface water. The last few times that the county road department has paved the road, they stopped resurfacing at my mailbox. I was told they did not do the cul-de-sac because the chip and seal would just wash into my drain and fill it up. So, the Washington County Road Department has known about the issue for over a decade and has done nothing to address it. Obviously, there is already a problem with runoff and erosion on the cul-de-sac, which is evident just by looking at it. The cul-de-sac has just been left to weather and wash away. With the addition of a new paved fire department access road directly beside the current offending driveway, my house and property do not even stand a chance of survival unless proper drainage and infrastructure is installed on North Lake Shore Drive to address the abundant amount of water that will be draining off the mountainside, neighboring driveway, access road, and county road. If this fire access road is installed, this will give hundreds of feet for the water to accumulate and hundreds of feet for it to pick up speed as it's running down the smooth surface of the access road. This will most definitely concentrate the water and discharge it upon another's land in greater volume and with greater force than would exist under natural conditions. This water will be sent down the mountain and forced directly at my property and named directly at my front door. Currently, there are no ditches or culverts on this section of North Lake Shore Drive. For proper drainage of the paved fire department access road, drainage will have to be installed at the bottom of the fire access road where it meets the cul-de-sac. In addition, ditches and culverts will also have to be installed on the south side of the cul-de-sac and road on North Lake Shore Drive to allow water from the fire access road to disperse into the ravine where it can then flow into the lake. If proper drainage and infrastructure is not incorporated with additions paved fire department access road, this will be detrimental to my comfort, safety, and general welfare. In addition, this will substantially diminish and impair my property value. If the drainage is not properly addressed, my family lakefront home could be washed away, the excess water could render my property useless and worthless. The CUP maps also states existing storm drainage should be upgraded if necessary. Within the last ten years, the side of the North Lake Shore Drive has been washed away during bound, downpours multiple times. The road department has added rocks each time to the side of the road to help shore it up. Each time, the ground was washed away to the edge of the asphalt, leaving a fifteen-foot drop that goes straight down. If additional water is introduced in the ravine, this can eventually lead to worse damage to the road, which is our only way in and out of the cul-de-sac. The infrastructure of North Lake Shore, Lake Shore Drive cannot support RVs because of low-hanging tree limbs that overhang the road in extremely sharp corners. So, what measures will be taken to keep visitors and RVs from utilizing the second access road? The documents provided are adamant that it will be used by emergency vehicles rather than public use. No RVs or other vehicles associated with customers or the RV park will be allowed to use this road. All RV park visitors will be required to use primary access from Nob Hill Loop. What will keep individuals from not using the access road? Electronic gates at both ends of this road will be the only way to properly control the access to the road to keep park visitors from utilizing it. With all this stated, it is obvious that I contest the proposed paved fire department access road is appointed directly at my home at the end of North Lake Shore Drive. This is a residential neighborhood. It should not have any road that accesses a commercial development or operation for any reason. North Lake Shore Drive is extremely windy, curvy, and narrow. If emergency vehicles take this road, then they have to take it extremely slowly and easily. This is not the best route for the second access road. I propose a second alternative, which can be seen in the maps provided. The paved fire access road can easily enter the property on Blue Springs Village Road, right next to where the Heritage Church is being installed, and the other RV park that has been approved. This will cost more than the proposed road and have to be about twice as long, however, it will be, allow for safer, easier, and quicker access to the site. In addition, this will allow for two entries and exits that can access the park all of the time and does not have to be limited to emergencies only. The second access point will be entering and exiting the right, entering and exiting right next to the RV campground that is being developed and the Heritage Church. This will allow for both parks to utilize the same road frontage and will not impact the neighborhood except for the entry point at four twelve. If you look at the map, I have marked an elevation level that stays completely constant for over half of the road that I proposed. My proposed access road will make it much easier to meet the grade requirements required by the fire marshal. The access that I am proposing will always keep all the traffic, traffic away from the neighborhood. The only house that the proposed access road will come near will be the house that sits on the development property. No other homes will be affected. I encourage everybody to consider my proposed second entry. It will have much less of an impact on the existing neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, thank you. Right behind you, yeah, coming forward.
Hello, I'm Ben Diggins from nineteen zero three seven Bear Trap Road, quite close to proximity. I'm glad that we've gone through and covered many of the things that we've been worried about in the past, but there are two things that I must reiterate. We absolutely need to look at a cap on this property. Having this much acreage and only allowing them, giving that right to develop twenty of those hundred and thirty-some odd acres, we must really look at that. And the second thing that I would like to also consider is, if you look at some of the plans, which is, will probably be hashed out in the LSD later on, a lot of the gradient, the way that it's set up, the runoff is going to run directly towards the lake on over half of the RV spaces that are allotted. Unless there's a substantial drainage system incorporated into this, then we must really look at something else, other than simply a detention pond and the way the septic is set up. Beyond that?
Restate your first point, just to make sure I understood it.
Sorry, the first point was allowing the capacity for five point five occupants per acre. If we go through that and allow this capacity, it's going to set a precedence in the area that is much larger if we don't put the cap on the entire property versus just the amount of area that's being developed. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wanted to address the RV? All right, seeing none. Public comment is closed. Nathan, is there anything inconsistent with those things to be reviewed than what you're already aware of or new information?
Like the gentleman just spoke, that was what I was referring? Like the gentleman just spoke, his, the cap on the overall number of RV spaces did refer to the entire property, and I'm sure I wasn't clear enough on that, but that's what I meant, and that's what.
This North Shore Drive, that's on our radar to be addressed or looked at?
So, I spoke with Assistant Superintendent Crowder with the road department today, and he says that the last time the road was surfaced was two thousand and twelve, and that the since, it was asphalted then, but slated to be chipped next, it went to a nine-year, a nine-year rotation rather than fifteen, and, excuse me, seven years, and that it should have been chipped again last year in two thousand and nineteen. However, what with the road department's schedule and everything, they just weren't able to get to it. But it's on their radar, and it's on their list, and they hope to be able to get to it soon, hopefully this year, maybe next.
And Nathan, with the screening, so we'll get another chance to look at the screening more focused at the next hearing?
Yes, sir, with large scale if this CUP is approved.
Under your additional conditions, the riparian zones, that wouldn't take into account, I mean, normally, we take into account water discharge, just normally, so water retention discharge?
And the riparian zones are basically in order to just try to maintain what is already there.
Right, that's a further than that.
On the big slope going down to the lake, but also in the channel, which is going to run between the detention pond and that, those drainage culverts that I showed pictures of. So, just trying to maintain as much existing vegetation and trying to keep them from removing it.
You have the questions? Some have been asked too many here.
The alternate route that the gentleman proposed, that could be also looked at the next meeting.
Absolutely, sir, and with the, the current, the currently proposed second entry exit, the applicant is proposing that be just for emergency access, and the requirement came from the Arkansas Fire Code that whenever you have over a certain number of RV spaces, you have to have a second means of entry and exit for emergency personnel. But the Arkansas Fire Code also dictates that ten percent maximum grade is allowed, and so, it may be that an alternate location for that second entry exit point is due.
Then you have gating and other things like you mentioned.
Yes, sir.
Again, so we're, not tonight, we just, conceptually, with things we're going to look at when we get later plans, that's what we're going on. Entertain a motion if you want.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the King's Ransom RV Park conditional use as presented.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none. See at large-scale development. Let the room clear, and then we will begin on the Hunt Rogers Springdale Quarry expansion. Just for the record while we're beginning, we have a couple of board members that want to be recused from consideration on this, and you all speak up?
Yes, I'll recuse myself from the Hunt Rogers Quarry discussion and voting.
Mr. Chairman, I will also be recusing from this particular project.
All right.
Before I get started, I wanted to point out to the planning board members, and I've already spoken with a few of you, but I have an update packet digitally, already opened on your computer, and it's, Randy, if you can't see it, I think Walter can probably point it out, and maybe you can point it out to Bob whenever he gets back. All right.
We're ready.
The Hunt Rogers Quarry Expansion CUP request is located in the northeast portion of the county, adjacent to the existing Hunt Rogers Springdale Quarry. The requested expansion area is on company-owned property adjacent to the east side of the existing quarry in Beaver Lake. In this image, you can see the existing quarry takes access from Parson Road, Parsons Road, excuse me, Washington County Road ninety-one. This diagram submitted by the project engineer shows the locations of the proposed quarry and additional stockpiling areas. This is the site plan submitted by the project engineer. The corners of the proposed areas are indicated with the northings and eastings. The requirement is to show the surveyed bearings and distances. So, if these proposed?
You're locked up for some reason. Your screen's a blind.
Oh, pardon me. Oh, no. Let me switch presentation and try my thumb drive real quick. Pardon me. Okay.
Tell you from the top or where you start?
Restart from right where I was at, unless you'd prefer I take it from the top. I'll go back one. This diagram submitted by the project engineer shows the locations of the proposed quarry and additional stockpiling areas. This is the site plan submitted by the project engineer. The corners of the proposed areas are indicated with northings and eastings. The requirement is to show the surveyed bearings and distances. So, if the proposed conditional use permit and preliminary large-scale development requests are approved, the project engineers required to update this plan and legal description with bearings and distances. In this diagram, you can see the additional area requested to be permitted by ADQ for quarrying, shown in green. This diagram shows the area the applicant is requesting CUP and large-scale development approval to quarry, shown in yellow. This diagram shows the requested CUP area superimposed over a topography map. So, let's look at some of the history related to the quarry. In two thousand and twelve, the quarry hired a new compliance officer who determined that there were encroachments outside the original permit boundaries from two thousand and three. So, they requested CUP and large-scale approval to expand into the new boundary. The yellow areas are for stockpiling. The green shows the area they were originally permitted for in two thousand and three, and the blue area is the area where the encroachment occurred. is the area where the encroachment occurred. After the CUP was approved in 2012, the large-scale was approved in 2013. There is a well-defined boundary for where the quarrying could occur, as well as stockpiling. And this is the 2013 approved large-scale development site plan. And now, back to the current request. Both the areas indicated with the arrows are proposing to transition from stockpiling to quarrying. And just to make sure that we're on the same page, just this square right here, not the rest. This will be quarrying, this will be transition from stockpiling to quarrying, and same down here. 202 neighbor notification packets went out to all property owners for the 264 properties within one-half mile from the existing and proposed quarry areas. Planning staff has taken 122 opposed comments via phone, mail, and email, and received one comment form in favor of the proposal from Hutchins Construction Company. This map illustrates where the comments are coming from. All the shaded properties received a neighbor notification packet, while the properties shaded in red were opposed. Green represents the subject properties. The opposed comments were regarding many aspects of compatibility, such as, but not limited to, devaluation of property values, environmental concerns regarding the lake, wildlife, drinking water, also noise, dust, increased traffic, damage to property due to blasting, air pollution, health risks, hours of operation, and dump trucks do not obey the speed limits, and they drive dangerously. Washington County Zoning Ordinance, Section 11-200, the criteria for allowance of conditional uses, and I'll go through them one by one real quick. A says the board shall hear and decide requests for conditional use and may authorize such if it finds. And I'll remind you that the first three criteria are the objective three and the last four, four through seven, are the subjective criteria. One, that a written application has been filed with the planning office and the fee has been paid. Two, the applicant has provided proof that each property owner set out in Section 11-204 has been notified by return receipt mail. Both of those have been objectively met. Notifications were sent out on December 20th. Number three, that adequate roads, utilities, drainage, and other public services are available and adequate, or will be made available and adequate if the use is granted. Number four, that the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. Staff comment is that the existing quarry received conditional use permit approval in 2012 and was considered compatible with the surrounding area at that time, with the conditions that were approved. This current quarry expansion request is to increase the area of that existing quarry. Since a quarry already exists at this location, planning staff feels compatibility has already been discussed and approved. However, many neighbors disagree with the compatibility of this CUP request and are requesting denial. Number five, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Staff comment, the requested use is already established with the existing quarry. The CUP request is an extension of the existing quarry on adjacent property that was owned by the applicant when zoning was established in 2006, and was partially being used for quarry operations when the CUP was approved in 2012. Number six, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the surrounding area. Staff comment, as this request is to expand an established quarry that received CUP approval in 2012, planning staff feels the expansion will not impact the other properties in the surrounding area any more than the existing quarry. Number seven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding area for uses already permitted in the zone. Staff comment, the conditional use has already been established with the existing quarry. Planning staff feels the expansion will not impede normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding area any differently than the existing quarry has. That's it for the seven, and then we go on to letter B. If it is determined that there exist conditions that could be imposed by the board that would significantly lessen the impact of the aforementioned, then the board has the power to impose said conditions which shall be specifically set forth. With, with that, with much opposition based on compatibility, planning staff withholds a recommendation at this time for the Hunt Rogers Springdale Quarry Expansion High-Impact Conditional Use Permit. However, if it is approved by the planning board, staff puts forth following conditions for consideration. There have been a couple additions to the conditions since the time of the staff report, so I'll read them quickly. Based on a letter received today from Beaver Water District, I'm adding the condition that reads, "Due to the elevated nutrient and algae levels within Friendship Cove, we request that fertilization, haying, and pasture grazing be ended on the expansion property to allow for natural vegetation to take over as the expansion area is slowly converted to usable quarry. The large-scale site plan shall be updated with surveyed bearings and distances of the ADQ permitted area and the approved CUP areas if approved, and shall be submitted to the planning department for the record." Thank you, and I'll take your questions if you have me for me.
At this point? All right, thank you. We will open it up for public comment, and the suggestions I made earlier about stating your name and your proximity, and again, your concern, and if it's been appropriately made by somebody, you don't have to necessarily reemphasize the same point. So, with that, name please?
My name is Kenneth Swift. I'm a resident of Friendship View Drive, 21660 Friendship View Drive, Springdale, Arkansas. The quarry lies to the west of me in its standing state as now. I am here with a, with a group of concerned citizens, concerned residents, that, that oppose this expansion. I'm a licensed real estate appraiser, I need to tell you that. I also need to tell you explicitly that I'm not here in the capacity of an appraiser. That's not why I'm here. I'm here as a citizen, as a resident of Friendship View Drive, one of the influenced areas of this expansion, of this quarry expansion. That being said, I can't say a whole lot about value. That's because of multiple reasons. One being, one, I'm not qualified. The other being, I'm not a disinterested third party. I've got a dog in the hunt. I've got a, a house that I've, that I've spent multiple dollars on. I mean, a lot of our family investment is in that home. And you can appreciate that. I know you can. One of the reasons I can't say anything about value is the fact that it requires to make a determination in regard to value, especially in something as large and impactful as this, it requires extensive, extensive research. And this research is to be done by disinterested third party, somebody who has no qualms, no issues with either side, no benefit from either side, totally disinterested third party. It requires extensive research, data acquisition, relevant data acquisition, and I know this from my appraisal field background. Again, I'm not as an appraiser, I'm as, just as a, as a resident and a citizen. This information needs to be compiled and verified and by qualified, licensed, certified valuation experts. The data needs, the, the, the research involved in a project like this needs to be extensive to say whether or not it has no impact on my home, whether it has detrimental impact or no impact whatsoever. I'm not claiming any impact. I'm not claiming that. I'm just saying that if impact is, if it's going to be said that there is no impact, then show us the documentation that proves that. There's reasons to show us the documentation that proves that. Obvious reasons. One of the major reasons is, is because we have people who are in the process of trying to sell their homes, and they're already having to disclose that the quarry is, is potentially expanding. It has to be made, that issue has to be addressed today. Does that have an impact on value? That I can't tell you. We need to look at it deeper than what we have so far. I am pleased that I do see in the CUP, and it was just read, Nathan just read it, we're looking at bullet point number six, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and the employment of other property in the surrounding area for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the surrounding area. That is wonderful things to hear. Those are exactly what we're here for, is that, that we be guaranteed this, that this is actually something that will be factual. However, it needs to be made by qualified, certified, professional people, disinterested third parties, and revealed, and the data be revealed to the residents. You know why we need it? You know why we need it for the residents? Why we need the data? We have homes with value, lots of our money invested in them. We actually have people trying to sell properties right now, having to make disclosures within their sales agreement with the realtors, right now. Do you think that may influence a potential buyer when he sees online 36 or 35 in the document that he has to disclose the fact that the quarry is expanding and doesn't really know what that impact might be? We have to make that decision ourselves. But for us, as residents, somebody who works with real estate properties every day, we need data. We need somebody to tell us, more than tell us, to show us, to prove to us that this is factual. Number six, that it's factual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swift. I don't know how to, are you all standing because you don't have a seat, or are you trying to make a line? I'm trying to, okay. That's all I thought. So, anybody who is thinking that, maybe if we can do that, that'll help. I just didn't want people confused. Go ahead, sir.
I'm representing Hunt Rogers. Did you want me to speak after the group or before the group?
No, wait, just a second. So far, I'm the chairman. Yeah, I'm asking to hear all the opposition, and I'll give you a chance to address, if you can keep notes or something. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
We'd like to thank you. My name is Brett Ralston. I live at 22042 Dogwood Circle. I'm lakefront. I'm approximately one and a half mile from the mining and quarrying, and I'm impacted through blasting, through dust coafs, through having to drive through. The egress-ingress is only one way in, one way out for the majority of these folks that are behind me and people that aren't here today. They have to travel past, to the north and to the south of the quarry. There's no other way in or out. So, I am here to represent the group. There's other people, there's a few others that are going to be speaking as well. I have some specific points that I'm going to bring up. But the first one that I would like to talk about is a show of hands of the, I heard when we were talking about another thing, there was a couple that recused themselves. Who recused themselves? Two, are there any others that have an invested interest in any of this project? No one else? Just the two of you? Okay. All right. The other point I'd like to make before I get into this is that the notification radius from the epicenter of this quarry is just a half a mile, as far as the legal notification that the county requires. But if you'll look behind me, give me a show of hands of everybody that lives outside of that half-mile radius from the quarry. Raise your hands if you live outside. I have no idea. Are there people? If you live outside the half-mile? And give me a raise of hands if you're impacted outside of that half-mile. We had a meeting at Sonora Baptist Church, I think it was about a week ago, and at that particular juncture, we had people that were coming in a mile and a half, two miles, three and four, that expressed their concern because of having to use that ingress-egress past the Hunt Rogers Quarry. In addition to that, they were concerned because of their houses and their, their property values, as well as shaking from the blasting was being felt as far away as, as my house, a half, a mile and a half, two miles away, not just the half-mile radius from the epicenter. So, I would suggest and submit that there is a need for the Hunt Rogers Quarry and for the planning board to extend that notification and opportunity for additional people, because they weren't even notified by this planning board or by this. And the, the name of this project is, is, you call it a high-impact. It's also called, it's also called high-intensive. High-intensive and high-impact. It certainly is intensive, and it certainly is impacting people in a great way. I appreciate the planning board doing a timeline of how this quarry kind of came about. I'd like to discuss that just a little bit. In 2003, the genesis of this quarry, when it was Northwest Arkansas Quarry, they came before you with a plan for 160 acres, not 120, 160 acres. And after some discussion, the Army Corps of Engineer became involved in 2003 and was concerned about a certain amount of the acreage that was being requested in that 160 acres that they were going to mine and stockpile and quarry. And so, it was decided at that time that they would exclude 40 acres of concern by the Army Corps of Engineer, so that they could get through the system without them having to be interfered with. So, that's why they went to the original 120 acres to do all of their mining, to do all of their stockpiling, to do all of their crushing, to do all of the business that they needed to do. And it wasn't in 2012 that they just minorly encroached outside of that 120 acres. We can show that in 2003, the very year that the 120 acres was approved, that they misrepresented themselves to you. They went immediately outside that 120 acres, and they started stockpiling on an additional, I think, almost 100 acres. Then they started mining outside of their particular area as well. So, this wasn't just some little minor, oh, we just got a little mixed up and we went a little far to the east or the west. Initially, they were snubbing their nose at the 120 acres from 2003, 2004, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. They were way outside the boundaries by acres and acres and acres of stockpiling and also mining. When 2012, when they say, well, they came to you because they had an internal review, that was the point in time in which the Rogers Group and the Northwest Arkansas Quarry Group were huddling to discuss a possible merger that was coming up. And I'm sure that compliance, when they found out that this was here, they couldn't do the merger or didn't want to do that merger until they found out that that additional 100 and some acres that they were out of compliance for all those years was brought into compliance, hence the expansion in 2012. In order to facilitate that expansion, we'll get into the representations and the misrepresentations. They represented themselves that the concerns of the citizens back in 2012, for the dust, for the, for the, the same conditions that are here today, would not only be alleviated, but they would be remedied. They didn't say, well, we won't increase. They were actually saying that they would be less, because if you didn't allow that expansion in 2012, they would have to mine all the time, and mining all the time would be detrimental to the community. They said if you allowed the expansion, and we can go back and show you the notes and their representation, that if you allowed the expansion, then they would only mine, crush, and do the things that were detrimental to the extended area anywhere from six to seven months. That was their representation. That was their promise. That was the reason you needed, this quorum court, or this planning board, needed to vote on an approval of the expansion was to lessen the objections to the people. So, that was one misrepresentation, because obviously, they've been mining 12 months out of the year. They've been blasting 12 months out of the year, not six, as they told the planning board, and as they told the quorum court, and as they told the citizens. They didn't limit themselves. They misrepresented that. They increased that. They also said that the, they, because there wasn't going to be an increase, and they would be limited. limited to six to seven months of mining and blasting, that this would greatly reduce the traffic, that there would be a better environment, that it would be fantastic, but it didn't. They increased their volume, they increased their sales, and they talk about this letter that they brought around to the residents. Did you guys get a copy of this? This is from the Hunt Rogers Group. All right. The Hunt Rogers Group went out within the last week and knocked on doors, and they brought a letter that is designed to somehow appease the people in the area. They say, they promise, "Dear neighbor, the Hunt Rogers has been operating in the community for over a decade, actually seventeen years. They pride themselves in extracting, processing, and supplying quality construction aggregate to businesses and residents in the surrounding Washington County. We're planning for the future." And here they're saying that their plans will bring more tax revenues to the county. Is that true? I say it is. They will bring more tax revenues. But look at this. If they bring more tax revenues, what does that mean? Simple economics, more sales, right? They can't bring more revenue unless there's more sales. How do they get more sales? More mining, more extracting, more crushing. So, they say there's not going to be any more. It's going to be basically just the same. But if you look at their plan, imagine the quarry is the size of my fist right now, not the quarry, but the mining aspect of it. I don't know if you've got it up on the thing, or you can show it, the mining. What they're asking for is five times the existing area in which they're currently mining and blasting. They're asking for five times the amount of where they're mining and blasting right now, and that moves to the proximity of east towards Beaver Lake, north towards Beaver Lake, and south towards Beaver Lake. So, people will be addressing a lot of those other concerns, but their promises, as they were in 2003, that they were only going to be within the hundred and twenty acres, misrepresentation. The representation that they were only going to mine six months to seven months out of the year, a misrepresentation. These are misrepresentations as well. There's going to be no damage to the roads or increased traffic? There already is damage to the roads. Monitor, Mayo, Looper in Benton County are, it's like a war zone in there from the truck traffic, the increased truck traffic. The road that goes up to Sonora Baptist Church, Sonora Road, Parsons Road, it's terrible. It's horrible. It's torn up. So, the first one, look, no damage to the roads or increased traffic. How are they not going to increase traffic if they're increasing mining fivefold? If they're going to increase tax revenues, which increase sales, which means more trucks, more gravel, more hauling, more mining, more blasting, that's their goal. So, these efforts to placate us, you and the quorum court, are misrepresentations, as they were in 2003 and as they were in 2012. No increase in blasting frequency. Well, they've already misrepresented that. They said they're only going to blast six to seven months out of the year. I think they just blasted today.
They did, man.
Yeah. So, they're blasting twelve months out of the year. So, their representations to us as a community, to you as a planning board, and to the quorum court have been misrepresentations. We ask you to vote no.
My name is Alexa McKay. My address is two-one-eight-one-five Friendship View Drive. My husband and I own two lots in Hunt's Lakeside Estates, and we're on the west side of the neighborhood, so our back porch overlooks the entire expansion. My family and I would like to express our strong opposition to the proposed expansion of Hunt Rogers, of the Hunt Rogers Quarry. Like many of my neighbors, including my mother and father-in-law, who live across the street, we purchased our land in Hunt's Lakeside Estates to build our home. There were no previous homeowners to disclose to us how our lives and property would be impacted by living so close to a mining operation. We were shocked to learn, two days after Christmas, that the proposed expansion would bring the quarry boundaries within half a mile of our back door. We never anticipated the quarry would expand to this degree. We're very concerned about how our lives and our property will be impacted living so close to our quarry and those operations, but more concerning than the effect on our home is the effect the close proximity of quarrying will have on our family's health. Our daughter, Harper, is almost two years old, and I'm currently pregnant with our second child. I worry that the amount of dust that's created by the quarry will affect the air quality and consequently the health of my children. I'd like to bring to your attention some of the health research that is available on the dangers of excessive mining near residential areas. Quarry blasting, crushing operations, and the like release particulate matter and hazardous silica dust into the air. Additionally, our air quality is affected by the diesel exhaust of industrial equipment and trucks that are heavily utilized in quarry operations. Studies show inhale particulate matter, along with engine exhaust and chemical vapors, can induce negative health effects. These effects include symptoms like headache, nausea, vertigo, shortness of breath, nasal congestion, cough, respiratory diseases like asthma, sinusitis, bronchitis, pneumonia, and severe allergies, and chronic diseases like cardiovascular disease, hypertension, and cancer. Silica dust particles created by rock quarries has also been proven to cause silicosis. A progressive incurable lung disease, long-term exposure to particulate matter is also strongly associated with heart disease, stroke, infertility, and pregnancy complications. I stand before you as an expectant mother deeply concerned about the health of my unborn child and my daughter and all the children who live in our neighborhood. In fact, I'd like to also touch on the fact that there is a danger of the amount of trucks on our roads that drive side-by-side with our school buses. Just this past Tuesday in east Arkansas, a school bus was involved in a multi-car collision with a dump truck. The bus flipped, and one child was airlifted. Looking at our area, there are seven schools within four miles of the quarry, four elementary schools, one middle school, one charter school, and one high school. There are five thousand three hundred and eighty-six school-aged children that live within four miles of the quarry, three thousand two hundred and fifty-one ride buses sharing rows with the dump trucks. I understand the dump trucks are not owned by the quarry, but to say that the trucks are not their problem does not show being a good neighbor. If the quarry expands so close to my home, we would likely leave for the sake of our children's health and well-being. The dream home we built and our only home that our daughter has known would be lost. The growth of the Hunt Rogers Quarry would come at the expense of the life that we've built in Hunt's Lakeside Estates. For the well-being of our community and our children, we implore you to vote no on the proposed rezoning and expansion of the quarry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, planning board members. My name is Alexandria Goff. I live at two-one-seven-three-two Friendship View. Myself and my family, we currently own three acres, three lots on that street, all of which would be facing the quarry across the road coming at us within half a mile. So, today I would like to address you and our community's concerns about environmental effects and the degradation that will likely occur if the Hunt Rogers Quarry is allowed to expand. The current proposal allows the entire parcels to be rezoned for active quarrying, right? So, one of those maps that Mr. Crouch put up there showed a smaller area within those parcels that would be actively quarried. However, the quarry representatives have also said that they will not be encroaching on acreage within the protected zone around Beaver Lake. But if you look at those maps and you realize that you are actually rezoning the entire parcel numbers, that there's nothing stopping the quarry from moving past that boundary into what is the protected watershed of Beaver Lake. As a result, the drinking water of the entire region is being put at risk. I'd like to quote from you from a letter that I previously entered into evidence earlier this week from a local sustainability specialist named Katie Turnbaugh. She states, quote, "Our karst topography allows efferlets migration of surface-to-groundwater. Surface water that does not make its way to the groundwater table will carry sediment into our public waterways. Gravel finds are a known degrader of macro invertebrate habitat. A reduction in macro invertebrate populations reduces the food available for fish, amphibians, birds, and other animals. This is gravely concerning. According to my conversations with the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, the long-nosed darter, which is a species of fish, lives in the Beaver Lake watershed and is currently considered an at-risk species. As we speak, this species in and of itself is under consideration to be placed on the National Endangered Species List. We're particularly concerned about the amount of pollution that would be coming into our drinking water source, because the current quarry is already adversely affecting Friendship Cove, which is that area of water you saw on the maps that is part of Beaver Lake. Right now, it is very close to the quarrying area, but if this proposal was allowed to pass through, the parcel number in particular that we're talking about would run alongside the shore of Beaver Lake. And again, there's no guarantee that the quarry would actually stay within their perimeter. Just as Mr. Ralston pointed out, they have a previous history of doing so. In the recent past, one of our neighbors caught a catfish in Friendship Cove closer on the end to the quarry, and when they pulled it out of the water, they found limestone and silica sediment all over the catfish. They reported it to the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, and it was investigated. But it's important to note that if we're talking about degradation of the environment for macro invertebrates, we are also seeing the effects for fish, amphibians, anything that is living in that water or is eating anything out of the water. That includes larger mammals, ourselves included. So, Northwest Arkansas prides itself on being environmentally friendly and responsible. Cities in the area have invested thousands and thousands of dollars for miles and miles of bike trails, and our state is known as the natural state. Would you feel comfortable putting our ecosystems and our drinking water for the entire region at risk? I surely hope that is not the case tonight. Thank you."
Good evening. I'm Brian McDuffie, and I live on Friendship View, one of the first builders in the subdivision there. And just to be really honest with you, I think it just escapes common sense that we're even here tonight. So, I don't have an engineering degree. I don't know how to measure. I don't have the equipment to measure the sound and the blasting, all those kinds of things, but I got a little bit of common sense. And there's just a lot of missing common sense here. And so, let me go back and just kind of frame this up from a neighborly perspective. A number of years ago, developer goes in and builds a subdivision. It's a pretty darn nice subdivision. Developer was so proud of it, they put their name on it in bold print on a stone wall in front of it, and an apostrophe S, possesses, possessive, Hunts. And they sold us a dream. I went out, built a great house there. Lots of people sitting behind me built a home back there. Nobody said anything about a rock quarry. So, here we are. One day, we wake up, and in the backyard of our subdivision, we got a rock quarry and an asphalt plant. Who builds a subdivision and then puts a rock quarry in the backyard? Would you do that and then tell your mom, hey, Mom, guess what I did today? I built a subdivision, and I put a rock quarry in their backyard. I mean, it just kind of escapes common sense. Who would build a rock quarry next to Northwest Arkansas's principal source of fresh water? Who would do that? What makes that a wise decision? Who builds a rock quarry or expands a rock quarry in the middle of four schools with buses traveling in all different directions on really curvy roads? By the way, their Northwest Arkansas roads are beautiful, but those dump trucks have a really hard time in the curve staying in their own lane, and maybe the school buses do too. You heard some of the stats on the number of students, but the buses are competing every morning with those dump trucks and every afternoon. And it's really fun when one of those dump trucks can't get up the hill, and they're, both pipes are dumping out black exhaust, and there's a school bus full of kids following it up the hill. Just, I just don't know. Who would think that was a wise thing to do? Who would think it was wise to run rock crushers? And I don't know how many decibels they kick out, but who would think it would be wise to run all those at seven, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, when the trucks feeding them are blaring their horns in, and she's trying to put her kid to bed? Who does that? I don't understand it. It's just beyond my imagination. And who was the crafty person who said, hey, let's send out this notice on Christmas Eve? Who was home on Christmas Eve? So, the post office takes them all back to their office, and we got to fight for three days to find out what our Christmas present is from Hunt Rogers. And if that wasn't crafty enough, how about doing it when there's three national holidays in between getting the letter and this hearing tonight? You know how difficult that made it to everybody to prepare for this tonight?
Militia.
Yeah, and it was no accident. You know it's not an accident. I'm a pretty smart guy. You're pretty smart guys. Who are we dealing with here? Look, you know, I don't know where all the cracks in my foundation come and the broken windows that some people have. I don't know why the tiles are broken on my floor. I don't know why my retaining wall is cracked, my driveway is cracked, but it wasn't cracked before the blasting. Now, I can't prove they did it, but I just got a little common sense. And, you know, and we've talked to them. They've had some nice barbecues. In fact, when they bring in food, the food's pretty good for the barbecue, I'll tell you. So, you should go if they do it. But when we go there, I don't want to say they lied, but the truth was kind of missing. They told us, hey, we put the rock crushers in the wrong place, so we're going to kind of move them down here in the quarry, and that'll lower the noise. So, they said they would do that. Problem is, they don't do what they say, right? And you heard a lot of that already tonight. They said they'd stop pushing that slime out on the road, and I don't know how they time it, but y'all just time it perfect, so I got to drive through it every night. It's that wet, slimy junk, and then soon as I drive through it, I got that paste all down the side of my car. It's only six bucks to wash your car. Just somehow, it doesn't seem right to me. They told us that they wouldn't expand the quarry for at least fifteen years. I guess that was dog years. I don't know. But that's not the truth, right? They said they'd plant trees all in the burn. Well, all to me is all. A third is not all. I don't know how that gets to be all. So, you know, look, I know that it's very challenging for you to think about putting a stop to this. You've got rules you have to follow. We all got rules we got to follow, but I would just tell you, it's never wrong to do the right thing. I have one ask. When you sit down and you talk about this and you go to take action on this, I would like you to just pause for one minute and think about how you would cast your vote if you lived in my house. If this rock quarry was expanding in your backyard, how would you vote? Doing the right thing is hard sometimes, but we ask that you do the right thing. And I appreciate your time tonight. I appreciate all the people who came here tonight, especially the political figures who came to hear both sides of the story, and thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Jim Crouch. I'm an attorney in Springdale. No relation to Nathan that I know of. I represent the Matthews family that have land surrounding and touching the land that the quarry owns, and they oppose, as do these other citizens, oppose this quarry. I think it's fitting, as someone mentioned, either Mr. Swift or Mr. Ralston, that this is entitled a high-impact... is entitled a high-impact CUP, and it certainly is high-impact. It's affecting these neighbors back here and their houses and their living conditions. And I'm particularly bothered by the notion that the planning office, and I know they do a good job and they mean well, but to say that this is compatible with the neighborhood just because it's already there? With that logic, that quarry could be in their backyards, quarrying hundreds of feet from them. That just doesn't make sense. And if it's, just because it was deemed compatible, what, 12 years ago or seven years ago, doesn't mean it's compatible now. And you've heard from these neighbors about how it's not compatible, about how rock crushers run all night long. I'll try not to plow the same ground that these other spokespeople have talked about, but I want to point out a couple of things. Mr. Gabbard, who is over all the Rogers quarries in Arkansas, was nice enough to meet with Mr. Matthews and I yesterday, and I asked him, "Well, how long is this gonna last?" And he has a chart. It's not in your packet, but, and I hadn't explained myself, did I? How long will we be quarrying out there in this new expansion? Which, by the way, it looks to me like it's doubling the size of the quarry. That's not compatible. But he said, "Well, you know, we're gonna start up, if my directions are right, on the north part, and then come down toward the lake. We're not gonna quarry at the lake until 50 years from now. Fifty years from now." Now, how much sense does it make to pass something that allows somebody to blast and crush rock and to dig and to make noise for 50 years? You know, things are gonna change, but that's the lively, that's the life of this quarry. And that's even though we won't be around, these folks probably won't be around, but it's gonna affect everybody out there. I know that you have a big packet. I got, I foiled the records from Nathan, and there's a lot of records, and I guess you have it probably. But there's one document that I found. I don't really know what it is for sure, but it must be meaningful, or it wouldn't be in the packet, and it's called a jurisdictional water assessment. It's from AST Environmental. It looks like that. And it's, again, it must be the way that they're justifying the environmental impact, at least in part, on this, for this quarry. Well, if you look at that, they've got photographs. Well, let me back up. They refer to something called an ephemeral tributary. I think that means one that's not well-defined, that just is not named. It flows into Friendship Creek. Friendship Creek flows into Beaver Lake, I think to this Friendship Cove we've been hearing about. Well, they've got pictures from 2015 in here to justify this jurisdictional water report. Things must have changed the last five years, but they've got pictures that don't show what the real situation is out there. I also will, and I'm gonna be quiet, I know I've used up my three minutes, I think also in your packet is a comment from both Beaver Water District that opposes this and from the, let me get this right, the Beaver Watershed Alliance, who says the scant information that we're given does not justify this. And I think, you know, I know the justification, one of the justifications for this expansion is, well, we're growing, the area's growing. We need more aggregate. We need more rock. And I suppose that's true. But you can't lose sight of the fact that we wouldn't have grown if in the '60s people with foresight hadn't built Beaver Lake. That's why we've grown. Let's not ruin it.
I live on Butler Ford Road. As Jim said, my family has 225 acres adjacent to the Hunt property. We bought that in the early '90s from a good man named Willard Walker. And one of the conversations I had with Willard is, you know, "What about all this property around me?" And he says, "Well, you don't need to worry. That's J.B. Hunt. He'll take good care of you. He'll be a great neighbor." Well, sure enough, in the early 2000s, he decides to build this quarry, and unfortunately, back then, there weren't a lot of restrictions. And I'm not gonna rehash what everybody else has said, but it's had a dramatic impact on our family, on our farm. You know, we drive through that mess every day. It's really disappointing to see what happened with the High Lonesome. It was one of the prettiest ranches in Northwest Arkansas, and J.B. ruined it. And I know the Hunt family has done a lot of stuff for Northwest Arkansas. They're a great family. They've supported our community. But I'm gonna tell you, this could be the worst legacy for their family if this is allowed to continue to grow. I appreciate Mrs. Hunt being here and listening to us. She didn't have to be here, but I hope she realizes, as she sees all these people here tonight, that there's a lot of concerns out there, and we're worried about what's gonna happen with this quarry. And I'm hoping, after what she sees and hears, she'll put a stop to this madness, because that's what it is. I served as chairman of the Northwest Arkansas Regional Airport Authority in the '90s, when the airport was built. Fortunately, the FAA made sure that we held ourselves accountable. We did the EIS studies. We made sure that we did all the studies to make sure that the airport would not impact Little Osage Creek in the cave fish. But you know, the airport is like a mile, two miles from Beaver Lake, I mean, from Little Osage Creek. But this quarry is less than a half mile from Little Friendship Creek. So, and there's no protections in place. If you look at the airport, there's retention ponds all around the airport because we have to collect all the runoff from the airport. And, but we're not collecting anything from this quarry, and I'm very, very concerned if you allow this to go, what is gonna impact our lake over the next 50 years? As Jim said, they presented a plan that's gonna last 50 years. It's ludicrous. So I know you guys got a tough job to do, but I hope that you make the right decision for our community.
Hello. My name is Rebecca Thompson. My grandfather and my grandmother live at 17494 Pleasure Heights Road, and I'm actually here this afternoon to speak on their behalf. They are able to speak for themselves, but I took it upon myself to volunteer to do that for them this afternoon because they really were just at a loss. They didn't really know what to do or how to approach the situation. And I can tell you tonight that I am not qualified to perhaps approach it myself. I'm hoping to speak to you guys today on this board in a matter of ethos, really. I am studying to be a respiratory therapist. My grandfather has some severe conditions that he has to struggle with concerning COPD, emphysema, things of that nature. As you've heard tonight, there are some relevant risks to our health by this quarry expanding. I think that that is something that shouldn't be taken lightly. I think that every individual matters, and if it was your family, I'm sure that you would be very concerned if, you know, something were to, you know, cause them harm. My grandpa and my grandma have lived there for 40 years, so they are somebody that is very well-vested in this due to that being the place that they called home. That's where they raised my mom. That's where me and my sister went, and we have a lot of great memories there. The expansion would actually be going right into the front of my grandpa's yard. So we're not somebody with 200 acres. We're not somebody who is gonna get a broad overlook. This is actually gonna be right in our front yard. That's not something that I would really imagine passing down to my children for their memories as well. So I would just ask that you guys take all of those things into consideration, and I hope that you are also oppositional to this, as we are and as many neighbors have come out tonight to express their opposition as well.
Hi, I'm Rita Gullig, and I live at 1708 Omaha Gady. I'm in there about the half-mile zone. And I want to talk about, before this thing ever went in out there, I've been out there better, probably 40 years. My neighbors up here at the rights been there longer than me. They were there when I got their skags. And the wealthies over here, they been there. And then right on over here, a handful, they been there way before I was there. And what I'm saying, first of all, I got this certified letter, but most of them didn't get one, and we're within hollering distance, in hollering distance. And another thing, before this thing went in, it's just ungodly how much difference there is now. When they first started this thing, dump trucks was little dump trucks, one load. Now they're two, maybe three, four, and one load. That's why the road's just got such big, deep holes in them. They run that BB beating all night sometimes. You drive by there, like they said, the dust is everywhere. We begin to get a lot of rain, the rain settles it down. But they've never controlled that dust. And a lot of people down, up and down Butler Ford Road, has got bad breathing problems, bad breathing problems. And I know it probably ain't all to go on with this. And another thing, when they first started that thing over there, you'd pull up to a stop sign, there would be one of those trucks in front of you. They'd just break your windshield or throw gravel all over you. But now they've got, they've come up with some type of veil or something. Sometimes they use them, sometimes they don't. You still have to really watch them. And I tell you something, it, when you go to the point where you begin to ruin the water, that's the last straw, or people's breathing, that's the last straw, because you just can't
Hello, my name is Kathy Janus. I live at 21754 Friendship View Drive. I look at the quarry, so every night when I look for my sun going down, all I see is the huge lights blaring at me, and I can't see the sun going down anymore with the beautiful sunsets in the area. I just want to read two things that I received from, I got from the Rogers Group. One is off their website, says, "Environmental Management and Sustainability. Committed to be responsible stewards of the environment. As with safety standards, federal, state, and local environmental laws are just a starting point for the Rogers Group. We challenge ourselves to be industry leaders in dust, noise, water, and vibration control. Protecting the health and safety of our employees and our communities is utmost importance. We are deeply committed to be responsible stewards of the environment, and we aim to minimize our plants' impact on the environment and nearby residential areas. Before establishing a new plant or site, or expanding an existing site, Rogers Group management works with local planning boards and agencies to conduct thorough site evaluations and address environmental concerns. Research efforts may include geological surveys, archaeology assessments, wetland studies, endangered species surveys, and other specialty reports. Rogers Groups actively seeks and places great value on the community input. By listening to our friends and neighbors, we're able to engage and partner with community leaders, local governments, and charitable organizations to make a positive, long-lasting impact. We work closely with city planners and public work officials and maintain an open dialogue with our neighbors, local officials, and community leaders. Our airage management teams respond to concerns voiced by the community as swiftly as possible." That's from their environmental page, as well as a letter. We received this letter in postal service on Tuesday, and I'd be more than happy to give you it if you want. The portion in the letter that I want to reiterate, it says that there's no environmental impact. If they did all of these studies leading up to before looking at expanding, please ask them for all the environmental research that they did before this went to you, as they said that they do. The other thing is, my husband and I, my children and my grandchildren, we fish Friendship View all the time. We're out there in our boat. The last five years, we've had to move from Friendship View out to the lake to catch our crappies, our bass, our walleyes. And it could just be the transition of the fish. I understand that. I don't do studies on it, but I know the fish isn't as good in Friendship View. We also have, you can look on the maps, there's two waterways coming into the end of the Friendship View Cove. And if you look at that, the spring when the water is low, the grandkids love to go down there, and the spring frees in there, and I don't want that spring to stop. That's where we get our fresh water, our current, that when the water is low in Beaver Lake, that's where the fresh water comes in for us on the Friendship View. That's what drives the fish in there to keep that. And if they're blasting, I know enough that when they blast, tables move, and that fresh water will stop.
My name's Bill Lloyd. I live at 21693 Friendship View Drive. I own two lots there. First thing I gotta say is, man, I look forward to the day when the planning board is expanded and include women. Half the people you represent out here are women. And I hope when you make your decision, you take that into consideration. You know, we all have our jobs. We all have our businesses. We have our associations with one another. Those are our livelihood, but they're not our lives, our families, including our children, our grandchildren, our homes. Those are our lives. And, you know, I've met with the Hunt Rogers people. I take them at their word. They, I don't think they intentionally mislead anyone. I think that circumstances happen that they have no control over, and that's a problem. They can't be specific on what their plans are. You know, they told me that they would move the operation below. Well, okay, either money or things happen that they couldn't do that. Well, but they should have, or not say anything about it. They also said that they would move east for another at least 15 years, but here we are. They're wanting to move east. Currently, I'm in the line of fire, direct line of fire of the quarry. If the expansion happens, it'll be in my backyard. And so I submit to you, would any of you buy a house with a quarry in the backyard? If you would, I have one for sale, if you interest. But I doubt any one of you are gonna be willing to buy a house or a piece of property that has a quarry in the backyard. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tricia Richardson. I live at 17353 Pleasure Heights Road. And I would like to say, when the quarry first moved in, I wasn't necessarily too concerned about it until the blasting started. And since then, we have cracks in our walls. We have windows that are cracked. We have windows that are fogging. And I don't have an advanced degree in those kinds of things to know if the blasting is the cause of those things, but I will say that I have called the quarry enough times and complained that they did actually send someone with a seismograph machine to my property. that they did actually send someone with a seismograph machine to my property before one of the blasts one time, and they, because they told me that they are allowed a certain amount of shaking in the ground and that, that as long as they're not over that limit, then they're fine. So they come, they came out and they set up the seismograph and then did their blast, and then they came and checked it, and yes, they were over the limit. But at the time, they told me they couldn't do anything about that. And so, since then, I've been dealing with the blasts. I've called the quarry on so many occasions, and I've told them, you know, I didn't really appreciate that blast you just did. It was huge, it shook my dishes, it shook my cabinets, and it scared me. I was minding my own business, doing my own thing, and that scared me. And so that's the kind of life I live. I teach school during the school year, so I'm home in the summers. They do blast twelve months of the year. I never have heard that they only would do it six months of the year. I've never experienced that. Um, and then the dump trucks, I know we've discussed the roads, but I, I don't think it's been mentioned. I would encourage you guys to drive out there and look at it yourselves. Um, there are huge potholes. You have to figure out how to straddle the potholes to get to where you're going. Those are, um, everywhere the dump trucks come to a stop. So at the end of Mayo Road, um, at the end of Sonora Road where it meets, um, four twelve, um, and then at the end of the, I don't know if, I think it's Looper where it meets two sixty-four, huge, huge potholes. Um, and then the dump trucks, um, I currently have my third crack in my windshield that we are gonna go and repair. And this particular crack, it wasn't because I was following a dump truck. They come, this particular one came speeding by in the opposite direction and flung a rock up and hit my windshield. And my daughter, and I have a picture of her car, she's going to replace her whole windshield, um, that got cracked by a dump truck just last week. So these are the kinds of things we have to deal with every day. I, I meet a dump truck on the road every day. I'm either behind one, or they're coming in the opposite direction daily. It never stops. And then, um, and so the expansion is gonna come right behind my backyard. And, um, I'm a runner, and I run at five or so in the morning, probably some of you have seen me. And when you look at the quarry from where I'm running, it looks like high noon. And so that's what I'm gonna get to experience now, not only from my front porch, I can see it, but now it's gonna be right in my backyard where I can see it. Um, and I hope this audio, this was from my, um, see if I, if it plays where you can hear it. This is the noise. This is five fifteen in the morning, this is from my front porch. That's what I get to listen to in the mornings when I'm running. So that's just some issues to deal with. I really hope that you guys would vote no for this expansion. And I know we've heard from so many people, it has had very negative impacts on all of us. So I, I really would appreciate if you would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jared Chandler, and I live at two one seven eight one Friendship View Drive. I own a lot there, a little over acre, and then also own twenty-five acres off of Ponderosa Road, which is adjoining this. So, uh, sitting here listening tonight, and I know we don't wanna reiterate, but I'm a managing director of Central States Manufacturing in Lowell. And I sat here and I listened to, uh, Brian McDuffie say, "It's never wrong to do the right thing," and he's absolutely right. We've listened tonight to proven misrepresentation of this project throughout, lack of integrity, manipulation of the data. Property valuation, valuation we know is gonna go down. I mean, we're kidding ourselves if we say it's not, it's going down. And the road's not safe. I have a sixteen-year-old daughter that's just now driving. I've been ran off the road at least twice by a dump truck. So help me, so help me. We gotta get it under control, guys. What I would like to know is, what was it approved for, the amount of loads that come out of that facility? Because I go to work sometimes at four thirty in the morning, I'm passing a dump truck. Sometimes six, passing a dump truck. If I'm late and I get out of my house at seven ten, it is horrible. Well, a fifteen-minute drive is now a thirty-minute drive. It is crazy out there, the roads, keeping up with the roads, the potholes that you've heard about all tonight. It's just, it's embarrassing. It should be embarrassing to this team. It should be embarrassing that we approve something, that we have no regulations to keep it in check. I get we've gotta be good neighbors. I get there's gotta be industry. I get that we've gotta have, you know, rock out, rock out in the, uh, in the industry. I'm in the construction industry, I get it. I get it, but we also have to be responsible, and we have to do business with integrity, and we have to keep our word when we say we're gonna do something. I remember buying this land, uh, uh, before J.B. Hunt passed. And, uh, you know, the negotiation back and forth, I was trying to draw him down off of the, the price of the land, and boy, he stuck, and there at the end, he gave me about two hundred dollars off just to make me feel good. J.B. Hunt was a good man. I think, looking at this right now, I think J.B. Hunt would look at this and say, "What are we doing here, guys?" He, he was an entrepreneur. So, I won't take any more time, but it's never, never, never wrong to do the right thing.
Good evening, gentlemen. I agree with the statement that was made earlier about this shouldn't be an all-male board. But, my name is Dr. Angela Courage Malott. My husband and I live at one eight three three two Ponderosa Drive. We cannot come home or leave home without passing the quarry and trucks. On multiple occasions, I have had near-miss accidents with trucks. Now, we do understand that's not the quarry's fault, but it's a result of the quarry, its expansion, and the business that it does there. So, expanding even further makes no sense at all. But I do wanna give you, um, a more personal perspective than anything that has been said so far. I just want you to consider for a moment. My cousin was killed in an accident with a major truck carrying a major load. He was driving behind the truck on a steep hill when the hill lost, when the truck lost its load. It wasn't a rock truck, it wasn't in this neighborhood. But the, but the likelihood of a major accident happening with one of our cars, my car, full of my grandchildren, increases every time we increase and approve expansion. What if it's not just a car? What if it's a school bus? And either because of a load being lost, accidents happen, it's reasonable to expect that. Or having to avoid some hazard in the road created by the trucks or the quarry, what is the value of the life of one carload or one busload of children? I want you to consider that before you make your decision. Thank you.
My name is Ruth Patrick. I live on two 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 nine six Butler Ford Road, which lays directly north of the asphalt company and the rock quarry. So I get both contaminants in my air. My daughter was pregnant with my grandson a year ago, had to go on bed rest for unknown reasons because her blood pressure, which she doesn't have blood pressure problems. And now I have a grandson that is also expecting a baby. He's staying with us. They're breathing in all this nice, healthy air that we step on our deck. I go, "I don't think that's healthy." And I hope y'all see the right thing to do.
Gentlemen, my name is Sarah Rix. I live on Washington County forty-five eighty-nine. I am just to the south of where the quarry is at this point. I moved here in two thousand. The quarry was not here at that time that I'm aware of. And it expanded in, I think, two thousand and three, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. Never have I been notified of any expansion at my address, and I'm very close. I also received a letter. It is this letter. It has no letterhead address, no phone number, nor is it signed by anyone, so that I would know who to contact. That gentleman is poor business handling in any corporation. I retired as a paralegal land specialist from Southwestern Energy a few years ago. As I looked around this room, I see some seniors like me. I see some up and coming. You're charged with making correct decisions. And this is one time you need to give it some clear thinking. This came in the mail last night. I had no time to do anything. It was in my mailbox. I had no time to do anything, but I would like to find out the answer to a few things. And I believe, Mr. Kelsey, you are the manager of the Rogers Group? Is that correct?
Ma'am, if you're gonna address me with this after I respectfully decline, I'm just, I'm just, no, wait a minute. You've, you've mentioned my name.
I have mentioned your name.
So let me, let me tell you, I am the area sales manager, and I respectfully decline to discuss this project because of a conflict of interest. That's all I'm willing to say.
I thought you would say that. I just wanted it on record that you were and why you recused yourself. There's a possibility that there is due diligence going on right now at the quarry. I don't know if there is any purchase and sales agreement. I don't know if there's any planned merger. When I drove out by there the other day, I noticed that they've expanded already. And that is just a slap in the face for the board. I have two front windows that have cracks. I have four windows that are gonna have to be replaced. I have had two front windshields hit by rock by the dump trucks going too fast down the roads. And you know, there's not a sign out there that says what the speed limit should be. They blasted today at about five till two. They blasted last Thursday when I was home at about ten till eleven. I worked with a gentleman called Mr. Charlo at Southwestern Energy, with Harold Carell, who was the president of Southwestern Energy. And I worked as a land specialist. So I am aware of what goes on corporately. I've sit on the board of directors. And I have been there, and what I'm saying is, this, to summarize what everyone has said here, and not to go back to what they have done. This is one time, this needs to be rejected. And if you don't feel that you can reject it at this time, at least table it and give us time. My map, where the new interstate four twelve is going to go across, goes right through the quarry. I am not interested in having my taxes increased to where we have to pay to fill up that quarry that they're blasting out. And I would like to have something in writing from the state. I'd also like to have everybody saying they got registered letters, I didn't get one. I don't have maps, I don't have anything that I can look at to even know what to do. And I hope that each of you have in your packet maps. I hope you have environmental quality updated. I hope you have all that. And I know it is a big, big charge that each of you have. But you know, if you live a little bit in this world, you learn to be responsible, because responsibility is what is right. And you learn, gentlemen, that there are others less fortunate than maybe all of you. But you learn that they are just as important for their view. So I ask you to vote no. And I would like to meet with the gentlemen, with the Rogers Group, to ask a bunch of questions about what is going on out there, because they didn't give me enough time. And if the planning commission puts this in the paper, I certainly didn't see that you were gonna discuss it tonight. I didn't see where you were gonna discuss any of the others or we would have met before. And I don't think that is right. So I feel like probably Adam Schiff and his group feel today. They're up there just yakking their jaws off and getting nowhere. But at the same time, since I am a registered Republican, I understand totally that we have the best economy that our president can give us. And let me tell you, I'm gonna vote for him and every other Republican, and I'm voting out all Democrats.
I, I just wanna conclude with, after hearing.
I'll reintroduce myself. My name is Brett Rolston. I live on Dogwood Circle at two two zero four two Dogwood Circle, which is about a mile and a half. I guess it's east and of the mine. I want you to remember when you're voting, the misrepresentation since two thousand and three, two thousand and twelve, and even going into today with the status quo. And I also want you to remember when you're voting, every complaint that you heard, yes, that's about what's already going on, and you can't do anything about that. But if you take every complaint that you've heard and you expand this, you're voting to multiply those complaints times five. So, we're not against the quarry as it exists now. We don't like it, but we're gonna put up with it because we have to. We're asking you not to expand or exacerbate their complaints times five, not only to these people, but to an extended people as they expand east, north, and south. Remember that as you vote. Thank you.
I would ask you, not that you all, I've gone to compliment you all. I mean, you've been very well organized, and you've been to the point, and I appreciate it. But sometimes when the other side gets up and they try to speak, people start booing and doing stuff that's not very respectful. And I'd ask you to not do that where we can hear his view. That is the difference between here and a lot of foreign countries. We all have the right to our opinion, and we have the right to say it. So, go ahead, and I've got a list of things I want you to address, but have at it. I know you have a lot to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and board members. My name is Tim Gorman. I'm the vice president for Hunt Rogers. Here tonight requesting approval of our expansion. With me, I have also brought some of our subject matter experts, so I may have to call on them for some of the questions we may have in regarding to, uh, blasting, environmental concerns, or operations. The, uh, to, to start things off, the, the capacity of our operation in the plant is, is gonna remain the same. The demand for our product is determined from our customers. You know, when there's schools built, homes are built, that's what is the, uh, demand that, that requires the need of, of stone to be. used on projects. Our goal as Hunt Rogers is to be a very responsive company. I've listened to the concerns here tonight and very receptive to those. We employ approximately 30 employees. We've been operating, those employees have been operating five years injury-free. We take very good pride, very high pride in our safety program and the way we perform our operations. We stay in compliance with ADEQ and the EPA. Some of the concerns we've heard tonight are related to this application have to do with dust, traffic, noise, blasting, protection of Beaver Lake. Start off with the traffic aspect. The demand for our products, like I said, is what caused dump trucks to be on the road. The further you, the rocky is from where the project is needed actually increases the cost of that material to be delivered to the project. So the further it is, the trucking cost goes up. And if you look at the, we talked about the schools that are being in close proximity to this. We talked about subdivisions growth that's happened around here. The further that you move a rock quarry or the supply of this product to where the project is, just requires more trucks on the road to get the demand to that product. So as a result, if this rock was, this quarry was not here, and rock was coming from somewhere else, it would require more trucks to be on the road. So the closer that you can be to where the projects are, that's where you get the least amount of trucks on the road. And really, the next point I wanted to bring out is dust. The concerns related to that. We have recently installed a wheel wash system to help with the dust at the quarry and tracking out on the road. We have work to do with that to continue to get where we have issues that some of the neighbors have had addressed to make sure that we address that. So if, as that's happening, we'll look at doing things different to wash and keep our entrance where we don't have that impact to the neighbors. We're continuously looking ways to further reduce dust. You know, one of the things that was talked about was the health of some of the people. Well, I talked about our employees and how valuable they are to us. Well, our employees are in that environment every single day. So we are doing everything we can to address the dust issues, and we continuously monitor it to make sure it's not impactful. And they're the ones that are on the ground in the middle of it. So we're on top of that to make sure that impact is very minimal. We always want to keep levels of dust down, especially for our neighbors. The protection of Beaver Lake and the environment. One of the things that was talked about is how important Beaver Lake is to this area. Very, very important as a water source. We've been operating at this location for many years. We utilize the water in this location to perform our operations for dust control, to wash the product as we're making it. And we have very few discharge events from the quarry. We need the water that is in this area that comes on our property. This past year has been a very, very wet year, as we all know. We had, I think, two events where we discharged water. We sample that water, along with ADEQ send the reports in, and we're very low in, well, in the readings of that water. We're approximately 10% of our permitted levels. So we're significantly ways away from anything that we're being in violation of that water or contamination according to the ADEQ Water Department. And we have a, being here, we have a very good track record with ADEQ as far as being in compliance with them. We've reached out to ADEQ and talked with them and looked at some of the issues that Mr. Crouch brought up related to that. And we're in agreement with some of the requests that they have related to the discharge of that water with relation to a permanent conservation easement of 10 to 15 acres that we could put in to buffer us between the operation and the lake. Blasting, we've heard some discussions on blasting this evening. Blasting typically one to two times per week. It's dependent upon demand. And we make the blast one to two times per week because we make them smaller to create less of a impact. We have a call list to help neighbors know before we have a blast. And anyone can be added to that. Alls they have to do is call, and we can add those people to the list so they know when the blast is coming. We utilize the latest technology in blasting. A lot of technology has taken place in regard to that, and we utilize that. We have experts that do that blasting for us, and they're extensive, extensive amount of training on that. We have self-imposed goals on our blasting that are half of the state level. It's goals that we have of ourselves to remain half or less of what the state regulations are. That's something that we try and adhere to on all levels. If there's one that gets above that half of that level, we're looking at different ways to mine and do the blast to get back below that half level. And listening to, well, and additional concern was related to noise. And that's something that we've, are looking at addressing immediately. The backup alarms on our equipment. We've gone through and starting to replace the backup alarms that the pinging sound that we all know is related to a backup alarm. We've installed, starting to install white noise backup alarms so they don't echo through the holler. It's a lot, it's, they meet the OSHA and MSHA requirements for backup alarms, but they don't, the sound doesn't travel near the distance that a loud, pinging, high-pitched backup alarm. So that's something that we've done to help eliminate the backup alarm noise. The, another condition that we're wanting to impose is to is have the formation of a neighborhood committee where we'll reach out quarterly or however frequently the neighborhood and the neighbors would want to meet and address issues and concerns that are out there so we can find a way to work through them and come to resolution. So those are some things that we would be wanting, we're wanting to do and put in place. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Can I, I think we may have some questions if we could?
Yes, sir.
I, for one, I'm a little confused on capacity on the expansion plan. How many loads, I don't know the proper way to ask it, so I'll try. But capacity, say if there's 10 trucks leaving today, will you expand this area where you close down the area that I guess has been exhausted, and you open up the other area? So your total capacity stays at X, 10 trucks? I just made that up.
Sure.
Or is it going from 10 to 20 trucks while you continue to empty out the area you're already working on?
Sure.
Help me with that.
Good question. As we mine through those areas, those areas become storage water, or storage areas for water. So when we extract the limestone from that area, it's no longer, there's nothing there. It's a void in the ground. And now that area is utilized to store the water, so we have no discharge of water off our property. So we're, as we continue to expand and move out, we only mine in an area at a time and work our way through that. So once we have mined through that area, we go to the next area. So it's, that's how the mine planning and the progression of a mine works.
Can I go with another, you know? Okay. On reclamation, what is your current restrictions you operate under, under ADEQ as to reclamation of previously mined property?
I'll defer that to my environmental person, but we have a reclamation plan in place.
Yes, my name is Van Medlock. I'm the director of Environmental Services. I'm based out of Nashville. When it comes to ADEQ, they do require a bond to be in place. And we, if we do not perform the reclamation as required per our plan, we forfeit that bond. And with this expansion, it's, we're not really expanding the quarry five times. We're adding about 200 acres to our footprint for reserves because going through this process is an expensive proposition for a company. So as we expand this quarry, we got to be smart about how we do it and when we do it, and do it in a compliant manner. But that bond is based on $2,000 per acre. And as we finish different areas, we have to fill out a reclamation report, submit that to ADEC on an annual basis, and, you know, state that, okay, this area is being removed and this area is now being mined. Because we have to report a total disturbed acreage every year.
More specifically, do they have requirements at what level you're supposed to bring the previously mined area to?
Yes, basically, they're looking for 70% coverage before they'll release it from the bond, and we can reduce our bond amount. 70% coverage means that the site that's been disturbed has to be revegetated to the extent that 70% of that is, got vegetation on it. And basically, that's a good number to minimize the amount of erosion that may occur.
Trying to think, since you're environmental, see if I have other questions environmental. Does anybody else?
I'd like to add, just, well, because we was talking about the discharge from the site, we've, Tim was alluding to the fact that we've had minimal discharges from that site because our pit, our pit has been able to be expanded to the extent that we are able to contain most of our water. Most of our water is routed right back down into our pit so that it can be preserved and conserved and recycled. Really, the water leaving our site is water we're diverting around that's coming from adjacent property that we're diverting away from our, in ditches around our property down to Beaver Lake.
Are you aware of any open citations or disputes with ADAQ or EPA regarding the project?
No, as a matter of fact, since we've partnered with Hunt Rogers, this site has not received any notices of violation with respect to air or water. And, you know, with respect to the air permits, you know, ADEQ, they've evaluated this type of industrial activity, and they have deemed that general permits are adequate to cover the processes and the operations, such that we actually have an air permit that allows us to operate. You know, it's based on, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And they found that the emissions from that process, because basically our quarry only emits particulate matter, they found that those processes, you know, they, they're easy to control. Our equipment is of the age that it falls under NSPS, which is New Source Performance Standards, meaning that our crushers have to meet a 15% opacity, and then our conveyors and screens have to meet a 10% opacity standard.
Thank you. I don't think I have any more environmental ones, so, okay, thank you. Yeah, let me get back to you, Mr. Gorman, if I can. On your expansion, you know, we've heard testimony that it's going to go right up to the water's edge. Can you reconcile that? Can we get a picture or anything of what's proposed to?
Chairman, you can see here, this is the...
Closest corner, if you will?
Closest corner right here.
Okay.
I can't, I don't have an exact distance, but here is a line that shows that's 1,350 feet is that dimension, basically, from there to there. So the, this is going to be, it's going to be not that distance, but I'm going to say that's, you know, somewhere around 800 to 1,000 feet from the edge of that location. And keep in mind that that location, as it's mined, the water that is in there is going to come back into the quarry. So it doesn't, it doesn't leave the site. It stays onsite.
Do you have any, do you have any open claims regarding health from neighbors? If you can comment on that. Do you have any legal things going on with your neighbors?
We do not.
Let's see, what else? Oh, somebody mentioned that you'd already expanded it. Is that, have you inspected the site? Is that just a misunderstanding where the boundaries are? Someone, Ms. Ricks, I think, if I'm a note to her right, said that the area had already been utilized?
The, if there's been any encroachments outside the 2012 approved bounds, then that hasn't been submitted to me.
And are you aware of any?
No, chairman.
Okay. Let's see.
I have one question. Okay, as you close down part of it and you open up more, is, are we looking at a lot of increased truck traffic? I know a lot of it's on demand, but I mean, you've got to be closing part of it and opening part of it.
Yes, it's, there's, the closing and open doesn't generate any additional truck traffic. Basically, as we, the truck traffic, it is what it is because it's generated, you know, from the demand of the product. As the schools are being built, as the roads are being built, the additional areas being opened only is the location where the mining is taking place. So we don't, we don't, with this expansion, we don't now mine in two different locations or add more plant to process the material. We're just have more area where we can feed the plant and process the material.
Jim, how much more time or volume or years do you have left in the current footprint?
Depends on, depends on how the, of course, our sales is, but somewhere around five to seven years.
Would that be sort of at your current rate of extraction?
Yes.
Is what you're saying? I had that question. I'm glad you asked it. And I'll give you a chance. Somebody else restated what you had told them about 50 years. You want to comment on that at all about what this expansion would change that to?
You know, a lot of it just depends on, like I said, the demand for the product.
There'll be recessions. I get that.
Recession, it depends on the, how deep the overburden is and how the soil is. But it's approximately, you know, 40 to 50 years. Yes, sir.
Okay.
What are the current hours of operation now? I mean, basically, about what time are you doing water?
We have, a lot of what we do is weather-dependent. When we have the times that we operate late in the night and run through the night has to do with a significant weather event coming up because weather has a big impact to our operations. When it gets freezing and we use our water for our dust suppression, it starts sticking to belts and gets in our screens and in our crushers and creates a hazard for that. So those are the times that we would go through the night at times. We do not operate on Sunday. Sunday, we were, we have our locations closed on, as far as actually shipping product. Usually, if we're open on Saturdays, it's typically till noon, unless there's a big project where someone needs to get a school opened or... where someone needs to get a, a, a school opened or something before a weather event comes, then we would try and, uh, stay, stay open as long as they needed to try and get it done before dark or whatever. But typically, it's, um, you know, it's like a, a six o'clock to, uh, six or seven o'clock at night is, is a typical day for us.
What about, uh, number of, of blasting? About how, what's the average been lately, about how many times you've had to blast?
Um, a, a, a typical time would be one to two times per week. And, and like I stated, we try and, uh, do smaller blasts, and it's a little more frequent when we do smaller blasts because it has less of an impact, so we can stay, uh, below our, our, um, requirements through the state and our self-imposed requirements.
Okay. Listening to your, yourself and, and, and also the crowd, the, the thing that concerns me, I don't question your hard skills, but your soft skills appear to be, uh, needing development. You, you're, you're obviously not getting along with your neighbors in a way that's satisfactory to them. And, uh, it, it, it creates additional pressure on, on people like ourselves to look at, look at what's been done in the past, what's being done now, and, uh, uh, you know, everyone realizes we gotta have more rock. But, and, and, uh, we don't question your ADEQ and, and the, the things that you're doing in that matter. But, uh, uh, I'm not gonna tell you how to run your business, but if you don't get along with your neighbors in the world that we live in today, it's, it's hard.
Yes, sir. And, and I, I will state that, um, you know, we, we talked about the, uh, the open houses for the neighbors and, and we, we are where we wanna be approachable with our neighbors. I mean, if, if, you know, I'm, uh, if they wanna come and, and have a discussion with us, if there's neighbors that wanna ride and look down and explain what, uh, have us explain what we're doing, and that, we, we take them in, get in the pickup truck, and we go look at it, and we address with concerns that they have. And that's what we'll continue to do. You know, that's the, our mission statement and our goals that, uh, was brought up, that was off our website, that is, that is what we do. We, that is our goal, and if we, if we have a, a misalignment with that, then that's what we'll address and, and deal with that. And we appreciate, I see that, that, uh, this, um, these neighbors here have, have those concerns, and we will meet with those and, and get where we are, are addressing those concerns.
It's kinda like in my situation where I live, I live on a farm, there's chicken houses on three sides of me. And when they spread chicken litter, when the wind's from the south and my, and, and it's headed right toward my house, that's not nice. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, and I realize that chicken manure, but, uh, it's, you're in the same situation when you're spreading de- dust, or you got potholes in the road, and sure, you didn't cause them, but your customers did. And, you, you know, you gotta fix it, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, and, you know, I, the, uh, the, the, the potholes in the road, we don't really have oversight for the road. So we, and, and we can work with the, with the highway department, um, and address those. You know, we pay a severance tax for every ton of rock that comes out, that's, that goes back into the, uh, to the road fund to, to help, uh, deal with that. It's an imp- type of an impact type thing. And, you know, what, what that fund goes for and where it's utilized, if it's, you know, where it goes, I can't address that. But I do know for every ton that we extract out, we pay, uh, a, a severance tax that goes to this county.
Maybe you need to fuss at this fellow right here, he's their attorney.
But we're, I mean, we're actually don't have jurisprudence to go out on the road, and, and I mean, that's, that's not something that we can actually go out on and, and fix potholes, because it's, I mean, we can, we can partner with the, with the, uh, the county highway department and, and work at, at doing a better job at that, yes, sir.
I just wanna say, as I understand, times have changed as people have spoken, the remarks about, uh, women on the board. We had two, by the way, and they've just resigned in the last year, so we, we're kinda mailed up right now, but it wasn't that way before. And we have had projects in our backyard, one of the projects we vote on tonight was in my backyard, so people, you know, always wanna say, what's in your backyard? And I just wanna explain to people that it's not for me to decide what I would do if it's in my backyard, I'm supposed to follow the law, and that's what I'm trying to do the best I can. So I appreciate your perspective, but I try to vote, I voted for a couple of bad projects that were real near my property because I thought they had the legal right to do it, so I would do the same here if I feel like they have, they've cleared all the hurdles. So my question is on the CUP, uh, which is what we're saying tonight, is this theoretically, uh, can we make it compatible somehow through a large-scale development plan, which would come further after this, is that correct, Nathan?
The large scale is next, yes, this, this one is approved.
And so, all of these issues, I mean, you're hearing a long list. I think, you know, that large-scale development in the old days might not have included hours of operation, might not have included how many trucks, might not have included having you responsible for making sure they have covers. You know, that's not your responsibility. I just think that staying timed to make it operate in a way that's efficient for your neighborhood, we all sort of need to know what we're getting into here if we do approve a CUP, because I think the large-scale development would have a lot of limitations on dust and other things. I just wanna make sure that everybody sort of knows the journey we're on, that if we pass the CUP saying, we'll entertain the thought that you can make this expansion compatible, but you would have to prove up, if you will, that you could make it compatible. And that's a, that's a big hill to climb, but I think it could be done if you were willing to commit to it. I just wanna make sure you know that process.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I, I would just like to say that, you know, I, I understand the emotion and passion of every person that has spoken here tonight. Uh, you know, we have a quar- I have a quarry next to, to my farm, I understand all that. And like Neil said, well, I'll go, going forward, as, as we run our businesses, we always have ways to improve them, you know, with things that we need to work on. So, you know, I appreciate your efforts to, to try to reach out to the, the neighbors and try to, you know, make it better as you go forward, because that, you know, I, I know it's, it's a huge undertaking to do that, but I encourage you to do that, because I, I understand all their concerns, but we're all trying to, to, to have a product here to, to help maintain our infrastructure and go forward as our economy grows. So, uh, I would appreciate your efforts to do that.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything further, any questions anybody has for him?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Based on, we started at five forty-five, I think we've had a good public discussion, again, thank you all for organizing it.
Yeah, I just have one question.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask if anybody has ever been notified before a blast?
Okay. Yeah, we'll plug, close the time for public comment is closed, and we'll give a chance for the board to consider it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one of the problems I have with voting on this to approve is the, just the, the vast quantity of new ground that there, that's available to them. I'm wondering if they would consider doing this in a phased approach, where they would have to come back in different periods of time. You know, I, I hate to go through this again, but if, you know, if we could, I mean, we're turning, we're, like we're saying, we're, we're doubling or tripling the size of this if we approve it, and, and I'm not comfortable in doing that without-
Yeah.
I'm just talking about the, the sheer, the sheer area, the time, you know, the time and area are, are pretty well tied together. But if, you know, if, if we, how many acres are we, are you trying to expand, a hundred and twenty acres? If you, if you looked at it, at forty acres at a time, or s- or some, some fraction of, of the total?
That's what I'm, I, I was saying earlier, I think, you know, if you, just theoretically, if you arrive at capacity limitations, that you would, you would back your way into that, that you would only do-
I mean, I'm not comfortable in approving something that's fifty years of, of, of time out there. It's, it's a matter of- Not that it, not that it ultimately couldn't be done that way, but just tonight, tonight on, whatever the day is, to approve something for fifty years, I, I'm, I'm a little, little con- I'm nervous about that.
I would be more comfortable with it also if it was done in phases, I think, uh, and then, and then we could, you know, we could kinda-
And I'm not talking about adding a whole lot at each phase, I'm just saying, you know, in five years of time or something, that way, we'd have to go back and go through this process fairly regularly to allow, I, I mean, I don't know if that works with their business plan, but, uh, I know it would, it would, would make me a lot more comfortable. That way, if the, something's been going on that, that just, you know, causes us all sorts of problems, we can say, hey, we're done. I mean, it, it's over. Gives, gives them more, more accountability to it.
Any other thoughts? We could add the conditions.
Yes, we can. Um, however, the, uh, the CUP that's been submitted, uh, reads one way, and, and so is the, all of the site plans and everything. And so, it's my opinion that we would have to go back through the cycle, um, and I believe that, uh, that'd be the way that we would need to do it. And then have another meeting and invite the neighbors as well.
Motion would be in order whenever you wanna make it, yeah.
I'd feel more comfortable if, if it was being proposed by the applicant than us dictating what, what it would be.
That's a motion.
I'd like to hear from the applicant, maybe, considering that.
Uh, what, what we'd like to consider with, uh, Mr. Medlock mentioned the, uh, the involvement of bringing this forward and, and the extensive, um, cost and, and, uh, resources that we have in this. Plus, if you look at our, our business plan and investment that we have in this, if, um, in, in order to continue with this investment, the investment that we made in the plant and the, and the, uh, the operations, we, we need to have a, we need to have a, a pretty long duration on this. But we would be open to coming back with a report that would, uh, put in some, um, put in, you know, a five-year report, where we would come back and say, this is our stance and, and, uh, this is how we're operating and our compatibility with the, with the neighbors.
Can you, can you-
Can we, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have to, I've been trying to kind of be patient, but we need to have order, and that's what we need to have. So the catcalling and stuff, we can't hear our own discussions, but please ask you to refrain from that. It's not having any, it's not persuading me in any way. If anything, it's irritating, but we just need to have regular discussion, we've had a public comment period. The board's trying to come up with a way to approach a very difficult topic, and it may be, we're all aware that this will be appealed one way or the other, either approved or denied, this will be appealed to the quorum court. So there's a lot of process, a lot of time, we're probably gonna have many meetings around this. So we just need to try to have them as orderly as possible. Now, you were gonna respond, sorry, or do you have any questions?
Well, would it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I was asking if you could come up with a, uh, proposal to mitigate the, the, the attitudinal difference between yourself and, and your neighbors. There's, there's a program where you can come up, you know, every, everybody can meet somewhere in the middle. But, uh, you, you, you don't, if you've got a program right now, it's, it's not being enacted according to your po- according to your neighbors. And, and, uh, you, you're, you're doing well with ADEQ, you don't have a choice, and several other areas where you, they can shut you down. But, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and, you know, one of the things I would propose is to have a, a neighborhood committee where we meet and sit down and address concerns, every one of them that's brought up and come to resolution with those. That's something we're committing to, whether it's quarterly, monthly, whatever frequency that, that was, uh, needed to address those and, and, and deal with every concern that, that our neighbors have.
Well, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate then that we table this, this until, uh, we can hear back from them concerning some of these issues like steps and, and, uh, public relations?
I mean, a motion's in order if you feel like you need further information to table it, but, you know, you'd have to make the motion have to pass that we'd table it, um, until you get additional information. I think we need to be pretty specific what the additional information is, just so we can not have, you know, require ourselves and them to go back through all of this again, so.
Okay.
Brian, does that kinda work for you, if we had a sort of specific what we wanted to resolve?
You just got some suggestions of what you'd like for it to say?
No, I just think that if you're gonna move to table it and you've got certain things you want them to, to go back and readdress, you need to let the applicant know exactly what it is, so that when it comes back up, um, at the next hearing, that those exact issues can be addressed by the applicant.
Yeah, and Mike, and like I say, the process would require, even if we get comfortable with the CUP, say, everything came back roses, the CUP, and then when we see the large-scale development plan, that's where specific things could or couldn't be added, so it would, it would evolve, right?
Right, yeah.
I, I, I highly doubt that you're gonna attack all fifty, fifty years of this project at one time. So it's, it's gonna be a phased project, one way or the other. So maybe you could come back with a, a plan showing what the phases would be and what milestones you would, you would be at, that we could then look at it again and say, you know, did you do what you said you were gonna do or not? You know, and take the pulse of the area about, you know, are we handling dust control? Are we handling noise control? And I, I would suggest that the, the first one be in a couple of years, I don't wanna push it, push it out there five years or ten years. I'd, I'd like to see it, it come back, because we, we lose track of these things, we, we approve them and then, you know, we lose track of them. We, we need, on a, on a high-impact project, we need, we need something that would be, that we can keep a short leash on. I mean, that's, that's really what, what I'd like to see. I don't know if we can do that, but that's what I'd like to see.
And we have a, um, a, um, actually, a, a drawing that shows our proposed mine plan. It's kind of, it's got ranges in it, because, you know, there's a lot of unknowns as you get in out years. But, I mean, basically, where we plan to start and stop and how we plan to progress, um, th- those operations.
Would you be receptive to us tabling it and come back and explain that to us and put some milestones on some papers? And we can try to-
What if I, what if I submitted this, this drawing that has, that has our mine plan and, and the areas highlighted and the dates that, that show us how we plan to, uh, operate those areas?
I don't think I could support that.
So the, the request is, is what?
Is to have some definite, this is the phase, and we're not gonna go past this line until we get approval for the next line that we're gonna go to. Just a thought.
Mr. Chairman, I think at this point, I'd like to move to table this to give the applicant time to consider, uh, presenting this in phases that, uh, would have some kind of control. We could have some kind of controls over- have some kinda controls over. Also, I would like to see some of the, I know all the public's concerns probably can't be addressed, but I'd like to, to have time for them to mediate some of those concerns with the public and address those issues too at the same time, maybe.
Is that the motion?
Yes, that is a motion.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, last-
Quick question, when you're, you're gonna table this, you need to set it for a time certain? So if that's next month at the next meeting or at two meetings, something like that, it would be best.
I have a question. How, how long a period of time would it take you to come up with a plan and to be able to address some of these concerns before we?
I think we can, we, we've heard the concerns of the, of the neighbors, I think we could have a plan that, that would address those and, and come back at the next meeting.
You think by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I would present that as a, bringing it back to by the next meeting.
Okay. Neil, you were second, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion and a second.
I'd like to say one thing real quick, as far as the, the tabling goes, and it has to do with neighbor notifications, goes out 30 days before and we've got a 35-day cycle. And so I'd need to have those plans in five days from today in order to send out to the neighbors, in order to get you on the next agenda.
Would you like, would you like me to change that to two months?
So the, the plans, Nathan, would be, would be like our, our mine plan, is that what you're talking about needing to submit?
The phasing areas and addressing the issues that you choose to address brought forth by the neighbors.
Okay.
I'll make it two months then.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion, second, to table it for two months, see if we can come back with some mitigation plans as well as a phasing plan that would be more acceptable. Is that a proper restatement of it?
Proper restatement.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion on the board? All in favor to table, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none? All right. Thank you all for your input and we will keep working on it. I move to other business. Nathan, it's a late hour, do you have much other business?
No, sir.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'm over there with adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, we're moving to adjourn, say aye. Stand up.
I wouldn't throw an ox at you, however.
No, no, no. That's my, that's just how it always works.